Good morning. Welcome to the Taxpayer Association of El Dorado County's online candidate forum. My name is Andy Nevis. I'm president of the association. With the challenges of COVID-19, in-person opportunities are likely to be limited this fall, but we still thought it was really important to provide voters a chance to hear from the candidates. And so that's what we're starting to do this morning. Today and next Monday, we're going to be hearing from the candidates for the Placerville City Council. Today, we're joined by Mayor Michael Saragosa and Jackie No, two of the candidates for city council. And next Monday, we'll be joined by Tracy Bunch and Mandy Rodriguez. Our forum today will be split into four parts. First, we're going to have opening statements from the candidates. Then we'll have four questions, or maybe three, I think I'll put one out, that were developed by a committee of taxpayer association members and friends. And finally, we'll have questions from the audience. Those of you who are in the audience can submit questions in one of three ways. If you're joining us here on Zoom this morning, you can type it into the chat box. If you're listening on the phone, you can email it to taxpayersedc@gmail.com. Once again, that's taxpayers plural, E D C as in El Dorado County, at gmail.com. And that's all lowercase. I'd like to remind everybody that this is not a debate. Any questions must be able to be answered by both candidates, and questions of a personal nature are not allowed. Please note, to ensure fairness, the pre-written questions that will be asked today will not be asked next week. And therefore, you shouldn't have any concern about that. And we're going to do a coin flip right now just to see which set of questions today's panelists will be asked. So here we go. So it's heads. So you guys are going to get the first list of questions that we prepared, and then the candidates next week will get the second list. Each candidate will have three minutes for an opening statement and one and a half minutes to answer each question. I have a timer here, and we'll be giving you hand signals. This is half. This is, you know, one minute left, and then time's up will just be the closed fist. And so if you're one of our candidates, please make sure you keep my screen in your Zoom window so that you can see those signals. We do have a hard stop today at 8:30, as I mentioned, so I plan to be fairly strict with the time so we can get to as many questions as we can. And with that, we're going to start our forum with the pledge of allegiance. I have a flag here in the room. Unfortunately, we don't have our, with the Zoom issues, we don't have the share screen, so I don't have a flag to put up. But if you have a flag in your presence, feel free to face it. If not, just think of one. All right, so please stand with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, everybody. And so with that, well, without further ado, we will get to our candidates. So I'm unmuting our candidates right now. And we'll start with opening statements. And I think I'll go in alphabetical order to start with the opening statement. So we'll start with Jackie No. So you have three minutes for an opening.
Good morning, everybody. For everyone who doesn't know me, my name's Jackie No. Just a little bit, my husband and I have lived in the city for 21 years. In this time, we've been very active in the community, in the government. Some of the things I've worked on are bridging the gap of communication between the city and the citizens. Back in 2009, when all of our water and sewer bills doubled, I wondered why I was shocked and why everyone else was shocked. And I realized that we really needed to work on that. So I helped establish the automatic agendas that everyone gets sent and the information sheets that go in the water bill. I served on, I've served on the Park and Rec Commission for the last nine years, eight years as the chair. I've sat on countless committees at the county, the city, and the Transportation Commission for special projects and master plans. In 2017, I worked with the police department in the city to bring the Trail Enhancement Plan to the city that really addressed safety issues and outreach. And then in 2018, I received the Citizen of the Year Award from the Placerville Police Department for all the work that we did together. I help out with events like National Night Out, Rise and Shine for Placerville, Christmas Trees on Highway 50, Walk to School, and many others. I think what I'm trying to tell you is that I'm running for city council because I love this community, and I'm 100% invested and committed to Placerville. The next couple of years are going to be really difficult. COVID is having a major effect on everyone in the city budget. We're going to end up using 25% of our emergency rainy day fund to help cover costs this year in the city. And we'll probably end up doing the same thing next year. So I'm not going to make any unrealistic, grandiose campaign promises because, quite frankly, they're just not realistic. What the city needs to focus on and keep doing is sticking to the priorities, sticking to the things that we've been working on, gaining control over the homeless situation, keeping our town safe from wildfires, not wildflowers, improving the traffic flow, continuing to rebuild our sewer and water systems. I worked on the committees to get those measures with the city so that we would have that funding. We need to really work on balancing the budget and looking at the problems that we have with the unfunded liabilities and the long list of deferred maintenance that we have. And we need to encourage local business growth to help pay for this all. And we're going to accomplish that. We're going to do it, and we're all going to do it together. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Mayor Saragosa, go ahead.
Great. Well, thank you, Andy and Todd, for putting this together this morning and for the opportunity to speak with you today. First, I just want to say Placerville is a city I am honored to call home. My wife and I moved here 15 years ago, and we immediately fell in love with the city. We were lucky to buy one of the historic homes in town, and we have a great time always working on it to keep it up in shape and in the condition that it should be in. I'm a small business owner. My wife and I have owned our own public affairs firm for the last 11 years. And before that, have worked in government, worked in Governor Schwarzenegger's administration, and had worked for three different legislators prior to that. I have the privilege of being mayor this year and representing all of Placerville residents. Un-president is a cliche term, but 2020 certainly fits the bill. In Placerville, you know, it started with the death of a young boy named Roman. Then came the pandemic, protests, budget deficits, fires, and rolling blackouts. We have a lot on our plate, and we have a lot more to do. If I have the honor of being elected in November to a new term, my primary focus will be to continue a conservative approach to government finances. Other cities have had problems over extending their pension obligations or spending general funds on pet projects. These are things that just cannot be done here in Placerville, or will not be done here in Placerville. I'm proud that this council and past councils have not overspent, and we had a healthy reserve. As Jackie mentioned, we have had to spend about 25% of our reserves. But we did have reserves, and that was because of the forethought of councils and of this council to put away money and not overspend on things that we simply can't afford. The pandemic is affecting all of us. I've continued to advocate against a Sacramento sort of one-size-fits-all approach to this pandemic. We were one of the first two counties to reopen because we do have low hospitalization rates and low infections. I think we can do things better here so that our businesses and our residents can thrive. From the council level, we've passed ordinances to allow our restaurants to be outside. And we'll continue to look at different ways in order for our businesses to thrive and continue. My other focus will be on fixing our roads, and our tax dollars are spent wisely. We have about $2 million a year that we can use on projects. The next big project is the repaving completely of Spring Street and Mosquito, two roads that desperately need repaving. We will eventually return to normalcy after this pandemic has spread, and we need steady leadership and experience at the helm to continue our good financial standing. I hope to earn your vote and look forward to your questions today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So we'll move on to our questions now. First question is going to be for Mayor Michael Saragosa, and then Jackie will answer after you. How can the city of Placerville strengthen its financial and budgetary situation? And again, the time limit for these is one minute and 30 seconds. So go ahead.
Thank you. Well, this is especially important question in light of the pandemic that we face today. I think the major thing we're going to have to do is ensure that we have a good and strong business atmosphere and a welcoming, a welcoming culture for our businesses. So that means we have to look at both small and big businesses. We've been fortunate to have some big box stores so that we can actually have that tax revenue at the same time uphold our small businesses like Main Street and allow them all to be able to function in a way that allows them to get back to business as quickly as possible. We've already seen businesses go under, and we need to do all that we can in order to allow them to grow after this and then be able to succeed. And so we're not going to pass any new taxes. That's just not something we're going to do at the city level. We're going to continue to work with our local partners and regional partners in order to grow our economic strength in the area. Thank you.
All right. Jackie?
Thank you. Yes, as everyone knows, we need to help grow our businesses. And I think the pandemic has really highlighted how dependent we are on sales tax, which makes us a little bit more vulnerable to things like this. So I think that we need to start thinking a little bit outside the box. I think the city has mainly been focused on retail dollars in, and I think perhaps we need to look at like software and tech companies and bringing a little bit of more diversity of businesses into the city. Now that we're expanding our walking and biking network up Broadway, we're starting to make it really attractive. Where I think that we can attract some of those younger business owners and that tech background that will really help diversify Placerville. In the meantime, I agree with what the city council has done, opening up the outdoor dining. I think that we can look at even expanding that further to help our businesses because we're going to have the short window, and then the rains in the winter or resurge. We need to do everything we can to help them now. Thank you.
All right. This will be another question. We'll start with Jackie. In 2016, Placerville voters approved Measure L, which was a sales tax measure to improve roads and replace aging sewer infrastructure. Four years into that, how do you think it's going? And what improvements would you suggest in the use of those funds?
Well, thank you. Yeah, I worked on passing Measure L. It was a very important measure, helping, you know, as everyone has seen, everybody comes through our town now, and that allows everyone to help pay for our streets and our roads. I think the city's been doing a great job in utilizing those funds. We have a committee that oversees and makes those recommendations. I had someone come up to me and say, hey, you told me to vote for that, and I haven't seen anything. And then I went to the website, and I sent them a list of all the projects that had been done, and they went, oh. And so a lot of times, people don't see it because it's not out their front door, but there's actually a lot of stuff going on, and there's a lot of projects coming down. Mosquito is a major one that's happening right now. The H and L committee just had a discussion about that, and that's moving along. And it's good to look at those opportunities like that one in particular, where we could look to highlight our history a little bit more. We have that little cemetery there, and nobody knows it's there. And so, you know, making little suggestions into that project, putting the signage in to help direct people. And was that my, I'm done?
Half time. Half a minute. Go ahead.
I'm very pleased with the progress that we've been making on both Measure H and L in rebuilding our structure, and we just need to keep at it. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Saragosa?
Thank you. Yeah, same. I think, you know, we roughly have about $2 million a year that we can use out of the H and L sales tax dollars for our projects around the city. I think we've been doing a pretty good job of using that money wisely. We have some of the bigger projects that have come up, like Mosquito and Spring Street. Upper Broadway is a little bit different, money that's been activated on that one. But in terms of things that we can do differently, you know, I like to see us be a little bit more proactive on just the patching repairs that we have throughout the city. Those dollars don't necessarily have to come out of the Measure H and L funds, but some may. So I think, you know, when we come out of our front door and you see a giant pothole, the city is actually pretty good about, if you call it in, we'll come out and make those repairs when we can. And so I like to see a little bit more proactivity on the pothole side. And then we have strong oversight on those Measure L dollars. I think the committee has a great job in doing good recommendations for us and working with our city engineer in order to get those projects online and moved. And we've been able to really also leverage other funding sources to do bigger projects and more projects. What you don't want to do is pave a street and then have to rip it up three years later because you have to replace the sewer. So it's better to do everything at once and get that work done. Thank you.
All right. So for Mayor Saragosa, how do you plan to protect Placerville's historic, sorry about that? How do you plan to protect Placerville's historic heritage while respecting private property rights and keeping the downtown area viable?
Absolutely. And it's a threading of the needle, I think, as well. You know, we have historic districts in our residential areas. I live in one myself. And like I said, I live in a house that's on the historic, the city's historic invoice. And so I understand the need to be able to adhere to those, and at the same time, I want people to be able to do what they need to for their properties. I actually, I support a historic district downtown. I think we sort of have one by de facto because if you live within, or if you have a place within 500 feet of a historic building that's on the city's inventory, you have to go through certain planning commission and through the Department of Interior Standards in order to do things to your buildings. I think we have one, and we have to be able to, you know, we want to keep that character of the historic Main Street. But at the same time, what's on the outside of that building is not necessarily what's on the inside of that building. So I think we can keep the historic landscape of our buildings without having to limit the type of businesses that we have and what they do on Main Street. Thank you.
All right. Jackie?
Yes. You know, State Parks has done a wonderful job of interpreting and preserving history. And so there's a nice model there to look at. Recently, at the Park and Rec Commission, we had someone bring an item, and they invited me to think Placerville a national park. And I had suggested to them, you know, that might be a ways off, and that's a very big discussion. But the thing that Placerville can do, like right now, without, actually without the government, you can get nonprofits and businesses to do is interpretive signing around the area. You take the old photos of what used to be there, and you explain to people, you know, you tell them the old stories and how it's changed through time. And people love our downtown. They love to walk it. And so having all of that at all the different locations, I think, would really enhance and share the history that we have in a way that people would really relate and like to do that.
Great. And this is going to be our last question of the pre-prepared questions. And I forgot to mention earlier, but I'd like to thank Chris Payne, Bill George, and Tom Cumston for serving on an advisory group to help put these first four questions together and make sure that they were fair to everybody. So we'll be transitioning into the audience questions. So if you're joining us on Zoom, feel free to put any questions in the chat box. Or if you're on the phone, again, it's taxpayers plural, edc@gmail.com. All right. So for Jackie No, how do you plan to reconcile your personal feelings with the need to represent the entire community as a council member?
Well, I think that is something that I have really worked on and has been important to me, is representing the community. And part of that is outreach, as I had mentioned earlier, with getting the agendas to people, having the information that people need sent to the water bills and give them the opportunity to reach out. You know, council meetings are twice a month, and there are very narrow windows for people to participate. So outreach, making yourself available to phone calls and emails. And we even started, we had community chats that we can't do right now because of COVID, but I think there's a lot more outreach that we can do. And I don't have issues with my personal versus representing committee the community. I think I've shown that in my position in the Park and Rec, that we really listen to the community, and if we're working together, we get to a point where I think you get a majority of people to agree, and that happens through thoughtful discussion and having those discussions. You know, when the controversial topics come out, we need to have a lot of discussion. We need to understand all the facts. We need to understand everyone's opinions. And I definitely will take the time to do that. Thank you.
All right. Michael Saragosa?
Andy, could you repeat the question?
Sure.
I think I missed it there. Yeah.
I'll pause the timer. How do you reconcile your personal feelings with the need to represent the entire community as a council member?
Absolutely. So yes, there's going to probably be times when maybe my personal opinion is different than my colleagues or with the community. Although I think most of the time, I'm fairly in lockstep, I think, with the prevailing, you know, wisdom here in Placerville. So when we do this, this is why we have dialogue. This is why we have the ability to speak with our residents. It's challenging right now during COVID-19 because we can't have things that we had in the past, like the community chats or people even in the audience at city council meetings. You know, Zoom is both a blessing and a curse because you get sometimes more people on, but at the other, but at the same time, you don't have that human interaction that you do if you were in person. And to really understand and get people's thoughts, I think, in a more thoughtful way than you do on a computer screen. And so as we go forward on any controversial issues, we do need to have those community chats. We have to use email. We have to use, we can use surveys in our water bills. So there's different ways that we can do that. And I'm looking forward to getting back and actually sitting around a table with people to have those types of discussions. And everyone has my email and phone number and can call me anytime as well. But those are just some of the ways. Thank you.
And I'd add, sometimes Zoom has its own issues, which is what we're experiencing this morning. Again, apologies if you have anybody trying to watch this on the livestream, but it's just not working with Zoom's issues this morning. So we're recording it. It'll be posted later today. So now we're going to transition to questions that have been submitted. And I think I'll go to Barbara Rogers first. She has a question. So she has kind of a preface first. She says, it's her opinion that for quite some time, the city only cares about the historic portion of Placerville. Businesses on Upper Main Street are ignored. Case in point, the homeless problem on that part of Main Street is out of control. What would you do to mitigate the problem once and for all? And so we'll start with Mayor Saragosa.
Yeah. So I guess that's a homeless question.
Yeah.
So the homeless question, so yes, there's no doubt that the homeless on Upper Broadway, and there's a couple of other locations as well, but Upper Broadway certainly has been exacerbated. We have people living along the freeway up on Upper Broadway, and it's incredibly frustrating for that part of town. Couple of things. One, we have the Upper Room up there. That's been sort of a magnet for people to come and live in that area. I'd like to look at other solutions, like Sheriff DiAgostini's Navigation Center, I think is the model that we should use if we're going to have to do any type of facility for homeless. So that's one. Two, we're under, unfortunately, we are under the thumb of a Ninth Circuit ruling, which doesn't allow us to actually move people out of public places. We did pass an ordinance that really only allows people to overnight camp in about three different areas of the city. So, you know, we won't have homeless people in every part, and we can move them from there. But on the other hand, there's no way to sort of arrest your way out of the homeless problem. If people are breaking the law, are setting illegal fires, using drugs, many other crimes, we will arrest them. But that is our, unfortunately, that is what we're under at this point. I hope the Supreme Court takes its case up again so that we could actually have effective controls for our homeless population. Thank you.
All right. So Jackie?
Yes. COVID has definitely exacerbated the situation. I felt like we were actually starting to get a handle on this. The city had passed the ordinance where we gave three specific spots where people would be allowed to camp in keeping with the court order. And those were spread throughout the town. They weren't all in one place. But with COVID, our hands have been tied, and pretty much they can do what they want. So getting through COVID will be important to, you know, getting back on track to where we were. In fact, this Tuesday, the council is receiving money for outreach officer for the hot team for the sheriffs, and that will help also because those teams go through the camps and they try to connect people with resources and the people who are really interested in getting off the streets, giving them all the opportunities to do so. In terms of long-term getting people off the streets, I think that we need to look at some of the models around the country that are working and happening. And I've been looking at some of those, and, you know, some of the solutions are, do lie with the nonprofits and the churches. Those are the biggest advocates. And looking at those people acquiring properties and running those shelters, I think is going to be a big part in having that, seeing my time, and we will just keep working that problem. Thank you.
All right. So let's see. Another emailed question. Marian Washburn asks, please speak to what you see as your highest priorities as a potential council member, and what can you bring to these priorities? So I'll start with Jackie.
Yeah. Well, I think the homeless is really at the top. You know, we talked about needing economic development so that we can move the city forward. And if we have homeless everywhere in the trash all over town, we are not going to attract business. So those definitely need to be on the top of our priority list. Definitely keeping our town safe from wild, I don't know why I keep wanting to say wildflowers, wildfires. And, you know, I think a problem in town has been the absentee landlords. And those are problems both with our buildings and the vacant land. And with the vacant land, the city recently passed some ordinances so that we can start addressing those things. Because as we all know, we're all sitting here waiting for the next wildfire. And yeah, I think that's a pretty important priority. You know, the other ones are traffic flow. Apple Hill is, you know, it's just encumbered the city where, you know, Friday and Sundays, you almost don't leave your home if you leave here. And so looking at the solutions, I understand they're coming up, you know, with possible solutions about opening the lights on Highway 50. But I think maybe we need to look at some other creative solutions in bringing maybe Apple Hill down the hill a bit to some remote locations where, you know, if you want your pie or this or that, we make it available so you don't have to come all the way to up to Apple Hill. Thank you. I'm out of time again.
All right. Michael Saragosa?
Can you repeat the question again, please?
So top three priorities, and what do you bring to the table to address them?
Absolutely. So again, I think the budget's going to be, you know, the huge factor. Even in good times, cities operate, you know, at a precarious level in terms of providing services for its residents. And I think with the economic downturn, it's going to be even more challenging. So we need to have, you know, that leadership on city council to be able to still provide good quality service to our residents, but at the same time, knowing that we're going to have to do less with more. And we've been doing that for a while, but we're going to have to do even more of that going forward. And then to the extent that we can incubate the business environment here, being an attractive location for businesses to want to relocate to, I'd love to see us get a couple more of the hotels come into town. It's a little difficult right now during COVID, but I think there's opportunities out there with businesses that still want to come in. We're a great area and a gateway to the wine country as well as our parks and recreation in our city. So there's opportunities to bring some business in. And then lastly, we do have to work on the homeless problem. Like I said, I support Sheriff DiAgostini's Navigation Center. I think we need something like that in order to have effective control of our homeless population here in the city. And again, and this is not a long-term, this is a short-term facility that would get people into the help that they need and then get them back into productive life. Thank you.
All right. Okay. So next we'll go. Okay. So next we'll go Dean Smith. He's asking, can the city of Placerville annex land to the Southwest to increase sales tax revenue from the businesses along Missouri Flat Road? That's, go ahead, Mayor Saragosa.
Yep. So we, so these conversations have gone on between the city and county over the years in terms of the size of Placerville and encroaching into those, annexing into those areas, both to the east and to the west potentially. I think it's something, as a city, it's something we always have to look at, certainly within our sphere of influence to grow and to increase that sales tax revenue. But just, and so we, we will continue to have those conversations. It's not an inexpensive process to go through. And so generally, when these types of discussions happen, there may be developers that are willing to front some of those costs in order to do it. But this would be a general fund hit to the city. So I don't know how much we'd be able to do at this point in terms of annexation with low funds. But it's always an option that's on the table to work with our district rerepresentative on those potential annexations. Thank you.
Yeah, definitely. It's always a possibility. And Missouri Flat's one, but I think the Smith Flat is actually perhaps a better opportunity for the city to start with. There's not a whole lot out there. But there is a huge piece of land right along the trail there. And in terms of the gateway to Apple Hill and expanding some of Placerville, I think that, I personally think that's a better opportunity. Or at least maybe an easier and more immediate opportunity than infringing on places who already have kind of stuff going on. And you want to argue with the county over who gets tax dollars, we'll not argue. But, you know, there's a lot more to be worked out where it's already developed. Yeah. Thank you.
So next question is from Chris Payne. Sorry, I clicked off of that screen for a second. Okay. So this will be starting with Jackie No. The city has three business districts. What are they? And do you see them as distinctly different in terms of economic development approach?
Yes, absolutely. Let's start with Placerville Drive. And that's probably our biggest moneymaker over there, right? We have the auto dealers. We have the Home Depot. We have railies. Big commercial opportunities and businesses over there. Main Street, much smaller. A lot of unique stores, retail stores. They definitely have their own flavor. And then you have Broadway, which half of this has disappeared over the last couple of years, unfortunately. And that's really where I think we have an opportunity to rebuild and redefine. And Broadway's getting some new improvements with sidewalks and bike lanes. And there's a landscape, some survey that just went out. So they're really looking at enhancing Broadway and redefining that. And I think there's some great opportunities up there. Thank you.
All right. I have to say, you guys are very quick at answering questions. Several of these during the primary and was always telling people to wrap it up. But you guys are well under time. So kudos on that. So let me see if I can find another. So this is from Sue Taylor. Sue is, she sent a few questions. So let me see what's going to be best right now.
Andy, did you want me to answer that question too?
Oh, yes. I'm so sorry, Mike. Go for it.
No, no problem at all. I wasn't sure if it was just a single one. So I'm happy to do it as well.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yep. So, yeah, so the three, so the three districts. You know, Main Street is what I consider the, it's the core, our, our central business district. And what I think when people, tourists think of Placerville, this is what they see. However, we're a working town. And so both our Placerville Drive as well as our Upper Broadway are really, would help support the community as well. Where some of our large tax base comes from as well. There's opportunities on both of those streets. Placerville Drive, I think there's opportunities to bring other businesses into that, into that area as well as Upper Broadway. And we've worked with Sacramento, Sacramento area county or council of governments on a pilot project to look at potentialities for how we can improve Upper Broad or Broadway and then onto Upper Broadway to bring more business investment into it and to look at different ways to enhance that corridor in the city. You know, I can envision more work, live spaces, some more business development down in that area. We have the new Tesla charging station there, which I think is a great way to bring more business into that upper part of Broadway. And if we were able to get hotels on either side of our city, it would also enhance both Placerville Drive as well as Broadway. So looking forward to working on those ventures as we go forward here. And I think there's just real possibilities to attract and enhance the business environment in those areas and really give our residents and tourists a lot more opportunities to live, work and shop here in town. Thank you.
And so now we'll go to Sue Taylor. So Sue asks, do you think the arts and culture should have possession of all five historic structures currently owned by the city and county? And she names the courthouse, old post office, phone, confidence in Jane. Why or why not? So we'll start with Mayor Saragosa.
Thank you. So currently, the Arts Council has there, well, they operate out of our old ketchup and mustard building. They're, the county owns the buildings, the old post office and the annex. And I don't know what ultimately will be the end goal with those buildings. The county right now is looking for buyers on those. They have spoken to the city in regards to those. But I think they're also looking to see if they can find somebody that, that would be willing to pay for those buildings at maybe market price. Ultimately, what happens with those buildings, the court, you know, I don't even consider that necessarily something that's going to happen. I mean, even if tomorrow, the court said they were going to build the new facility, we're probably looking at a 10 year timeline on the court building. So I think it's a premature way to even think about that one. We'll see, you know, when that actually happens. But to the other buildings, I'm not sure. I, I know I want to save those buildings and they should be restored. But at the same time, we, we need to have somebody that has a plan and has the ability to raise the funds in order to bring those businesses back. So whether that's the Arts Council, whether that's another community organization or a private business, we want to make sure that those, that those buildings thrive and have the opportunity.
So Mike, you just froze up there. Can you hear us still? Oh.
Next time, smile before you freeze, Mike.
Yeah. Well, Jackie, go ahead and answer that question and we'll hope that Mike can get his video back.
Yeah.
How do you do that?
In the ketchup and mustard building and.
Yeah. Do you want me to repeat it?
Well, I, I think I got, we're talking about, yeah.
Yeah.
Ketchup and mustard building. You know, the Arts Council is in there now. And prior to that, I was in favor of the city selling that building to someone who wanted to restore that building. I am not really in favor of the city taking control of all those buildings. I think Sue Taylor's done a great job in restoring the buildings that she has. And that's a great example of what ideally we'd like to happen. City has a lot of business to do. Property management, I hope, isn't going to be one of them. In terms of the county buildings, that's kind of really a premature question because we don't own them and we don't have any control over who the county is going to rent them to or whatever. But definitely, if we have to, or we do go in that direction, we'll be looking at who's going to be able to afford them and restore them and who has the best business plan. I'm not going to choose anyone based on any priority other than probably what they're going to bring to Placerville and their ability to actually do what they say they can do. Thank you.
All right. And we do have Mayor Saragosa back with us. Like I said, Zoom, it's, it's not ideal, but it is what it is right now. So, but you didn't miss much. So, but we'll go ahead and go to a question from Steve Ferry. And again, we'll start with Jackie No. Placerville's biggest problem could be a major fire event such as Paradise. Have you mapped out where you could put a series of fire breaks around or inside the city?
Ooh, that is a great idea. To answer the question, no, I haven't mapped out where we could put out the fire breaks. But there are a lot of opportunities out there. You know, I've been really frustrated with PG&E when they come in to cut their trees down and they cut them one or two feet from the wire and then they leave them and they grow back in one or two years. You know, I know that people don't like the takedown brush, but those are just prime spots where we could, you know, cut them down, save a lot of time and labor and make those fire breaks. So have I looked at them? No. Am I in favor of them? Yes.
Okay. Mayor Saragosa? Oh, we got to, I got to meet you first. Sorry that you came back.
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, the wonders of technology. So apologize.
That's okay.
Apologize for that. Yeah, no, I, to the specific question, I guess the answer is kind of. So we have, our, our streets are sort of natural fire breaks that we've had throughout the city. However, I think it's always good to look at other options for us. You know, we don't want to be another paradise. We have some of the same topographical issues that Paradise had. Luckily for us, we have some more exits than needed in the event of a catastrophic fire. But we still have a lot of the same risks that date that they do as we move forward here. And so I, I, I will talk to Chief Cordero about that and see what other options that we may have in terms of fire breaks in and around the city. But certainly we're working, we're continuing to hound PG&E to take care of their infrastructure and around their lines. We passed an ordinance, vegetation ordinance so that people, and this was really aimed at absentee landlords as well. For those that had overgrown plots and buildings that weren't being taken care of, that we could go after sort of the worst offenders that are out there. And we have been doing that. It's, it's going to be a constant battle. And I'm lucky that we passed this lightning storm that happened and we didn't have some of the blazes that happened out in Napa. So thank you.
Yep. All right. So next from Tom Cumston. Do you believe that our police department has the resources to address not just crime, but community issues such as homelessness, juvenile delinquency, et cetera? If not, how should those issues be addressed? So Michael Saragosa, we'll start with you.
Yeah. So we're, we're, we are not at the funding level that we should be for our police department. We, I think, I believe we're down at least three police officers from where we would historically be, unfortunately. So we are answering, our, our officers are answering multiple calls and it's just been exacerbated during COVID and people staying home. We've seen a lot more rise in incidents. And so our, our officers are really stretched thin. So when we ask them to be social workers, you know, taking care of the homeless and doing really other jobs, really outside of their main, their main goal of protecting us and serving the community, it puts a real strain on that police department. And so, yes, I think we need to work more closely with our county and regional counterparts to look at other solutions that may include more social services for our homeless population. That doesn't just rely on law enforcement to do. All these things cost though. And so whether it's the city of Placerville or the county, there's going to be real costs associated with those things. But I do think our police are stretched in in a way that they shouldn't have to be to do things that aren't necessarily within their purview, but certainly fall to them as sort of the last line of defense. And so I, we continue to look for grants and other ways where to fully fund our police force, but more work to do there.
Jackie No?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. It's, do you believe our police department has the resources to address not just crime, but other community issues such as homelessness, juvenile delinquency, et cetera? If not, how should those issues be addressed?
So, no, I don't think that our police department has all the resources that they, they need. We've been asking them to do more with less, I think continually for about five years now. And then COVID came and the one resource officer that we did have to help with the homeless situation, you know, we had to, to bring him back into the community to deal with things. The good news is we're getting another officer this Tuesday. That's on the council tomorrow. And so, yeah, we need to look at ways to help that police department. And so I think the ways that that is going to come about is working with the community and the volunteerism to see what we can do to help them. I mean, there are no more dollars coming. That's the reality. And so, you know, what can our volunteers do? What can the shield do? And sit down with our police department and see what we can do as a community to help them. Thank you.
All right. So let's see, I just saw one, I think that was just an informational note from Chris. Oh, let me, let me see. Okay, here's a question, another question from Dean Smith. Do you have any numbers about the effect of COVID-19 on Placerville businesses? Such as the percent decline in sales tax revenue or the number of business closures or commercial vacancy rates? So Jackie No, we'll start with you.
No, I don't, I don't have those numbers and statistics. Certainly, we are all watching, you know, businesses close down one after one from COVID. That's terrible.
All right. Mayor Saragosa?
Yep. So, yeah, the numbers lag when they, when they get reported into us, both from the state and from our consultants, HDL. They're, you know, it's usually at least a couple of quarters behind. But we know, I mean, we can, we can see it. We've seen businesses close around the city. We've, we've lost a couple of restaurants and we certainly know that, that sales have been down in a lot of our small businesses throughout Placerville. The one plate, the places that have thrived still have been like the Home Depots and lumber. A couple of our places that support the community are in our grocery stores as well as some of the automobile dealerships. But everybody else is really taking a hit during this. And so it's going to take quite a bit for everybody to get it back to where we were. And now we're facing the loss of the $600 extra from the federal government for people. So I think you're going to start seeing even more people that have less move going around and even potentially going into our businesses. So when, when the feds work on a solution at that level for more stimulus potentially, it's going to continue to, to be a harm to our local businesses here. There is that $5 million grant that the county is doing and Placerville businesses will be able to participate in that as well.
Okay. And I think this will probably be our last question. So let me see if we can get a, get one here. I think I'll go back to Sue Taylor. She's asking if you would be open to seeing the old post office used as a mineral, mineral and gem hands on museum? So Michael Saragosa, you want to take a crack at that?
Sure. I have, I have no, I, I don't really know what that is, but I'll just say generally speaking, again, I'll go back to my, my previous answer, which is, you know, what ultimate, whatever ultimately happens with any of those buildings, it's got to be somebody that goes in there that can be able to afford to go in there and upkeep those buildings and, and keep them going. And so whatever that may be, whether it's a mineral, you know, someone that's going to display minerals and have a, a museum there, whatever that may be. I think from my perspective as a council member, I just want to see a plan that's going to show that they can take these buildings as well as have a viable future to keep them going in, into the future as well. So that would be my answer on that one.
Okay. Jackie No?
Yes, I, I'm, I'm open to whatever, all the ideas that we can put out. I mean, the more ideas and the different things that we can have to attract people to Placerville is great. I'm going to be really looking. I'm going to be really looking at how, how each person is going to be able to afford to do what they say they can do. I don't want the city to be put on the hook for, you know, a bunch of people's ideas and then they don't work out and then we, the taxpayers are paying for, for all of that. So I would say that'd be one of my main concerns. Now, we have a museum on Main Street that appears to be self-sufficient. So if they can come up with a model, yeah, definitely, I'd be open to looking at that and seeing how they can make it all work. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Well, that concludes our formal forum, but one last thing, I wanted to give each of you an opportunity to, you know, we, one of those unfortunate things about doing these forums online is there's not really a chance to, you know, meet and greet afterwards and meet you guys. So if someone wants to discuss more with you, what's the best way for them to get in touch with you and get to know you a little bit better? So I'll start with Jackie No.
Yeah, so shoot me an email. My email is J A C K I E N E A U 1854 at gmail.com. And I will definitely get back to you either by phone or email, however you prefer, and let's chat. Thanks.
All right. Michael Saragosa?
Yeah, likewise. So my, my cell phone number is 916-267-3060. Them emails, if it's a city issue, msaragosa@cityofplacerville.org. And then if it's a campaign issue, mnaragosa, S A R A G O S A at gmail.com. And happy to talk to anyone at any time. Again, thank you all this morning for joining and for listening to myself and to Jackie about our visions for Placerville. I appreciate being here this morning with you all.
Great. Well, thank you to you both. That was a great discussion. Like I said, next Monday, we'll be hearing from two of the other candidates, Mandy Rodriguez and Tracy Bunch. So we'll be looking forward to that, that hopefully will be broadcast live on Facebook if Zoom is up to it. And again, apologies for the technical issues this morning. We do expect to be able to have this recording up on Facebook and YouTube later this afternoon. So if you didn't get a chance to see all of it, or you, Zoom wouldn't let you in at first and you missed some of it, you can go back and watch there. And then finally, for those of you that, there were a few questions that we got submitted that I wasn't able to get to, I'll be saving those questions for next week. So you'll have another chance to perhaps have those asked of the other candidates next week. So with that, that concludes our candidate forum. I'm going to stop the recording. We do have a little bit of taxpayer association business to get to. So we'll do that in just a second. But for now, thank you again.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right. Cool.